I'm here tonight, we're gonna begin the presentation by introducing the board members. As we know, Mr. Don Hardey, President, Kristi Vance, Vice President, Mr. Stephen Box, Secretary, Anthony Edwards, Trustee, as well as Toby Bollinger, Paul Junior, Board Attorney, Superintendent of Education, Dr. Lisa Langford, and Assistant Superintendent is Dr. Timothy Cook. Like to start it off by stating our mission, which is to ensure equitable and exceptional growth opportunities to maximize success for all, as well as our vision is to create and maintain a safe and nurturing environment which supports learning through innovation, engagement, and collaboration, while focusing on personal and financial responsibilities to achieve the highest levels of success. The purpose of the budget, each year, the annual budget serves as a critical planning tool, allowing us to measure and monitor both revenues and expenditures throughout the fiscal year. It's essential to the sound financial management and helps ensure that we are responsibly allocating resources to support student learning, staff needs, and school operations. The budget at this time reflects reflects our best projections and revenues based on the information we have at this time. Throughout the year, the board will monitor and adjust the budget as needed to respond to to respond to the changes in enrollment, funding, staffing needs, and other factors. The purpose of this hearing is to provide budgetary information of the Calhoun County School District to interested parties. It includes both summarized and detailed budget data relating to the projected revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Per Mississippi State Statute thirty-seven sixty-one nine, we, the school board is required to, along with assistance of the superintendent, to prepare a budget of the anticipated revenue and expenditures, and with this will be filed after the adoption of the budget on by August the fifteenth for the coming fiscal year. According to Mississippi Code, Section thirty-seven sixty-one twenty-one, we will amend the FY twenty-five budget by the October fifteenth deadline. Once the board approves the budget, we will send a synopsis to the paper. It'll be published in the paper, as well as sent to a copy to the Mississippi Department of Education. General information about the budget, we serve pre-K students through twelfth grade with an average of enrollment of approximately two thousand and one students. Last year at this time, our enrollment average was two thousand fifty-four. The district is one of the largest employers of Calhoun County with approximately four hundred and eleven employees. That includes teachers, instructional assistants, administrators, office personnel, cafeteria staff, bus drivers, maintenance workers, and substitute teachers. We are proud to announce that we do have twenty-four National Board Certified Staff Members. That includes our teachers, speech pathologists, and nurses. Some information from the MDE website, this is based on the twenty-three twenty-four report card. The twenty-four twenty-five information has not been released at this time. We are an accredited school district with a label of a B. Our graduation rate was eighty-nine, the state average is eighty-nine point four. As you can see, our math proficiency, English, history, college career readiness in their district ACT average of eighteen. I will state that we do test all eleventh graders for our ACT. We have gone up. Yes, sir. We also provide a comprehensive educational experience, balance and required core instruction with diverse opportunities of enhancement and specialization. High school students also have the chance of taking accelerated and advanced placement courses. And some of our electives that we offer throughout the district are art, computer science, foreign language, music and drama, sociology. And we are very proud of our Career Technical Center where they have hands-on ag allied help, Engineering Teacher Academy, construction, automotive, law enforcement, digital media, and welding. We also have our special education program for those with needs, as well as our gifted serves kids second through sixth grade. Budget overview, we anticipate a revenue of twenty-seven million ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and fourteen with expenditures of twenty-eight million four ninety-one eight seventy-four for the fiscal year ending July, um, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We do have a decent fund balance, and so that would help with the deficit at the end with more revenue, um, expenditures than we did revenues.
Is that because we're missing the bad money?
It's it's a little bit of both, our state funding, we lost four hundred thousand dollars, and I've got a chart that I was gonna show you regarding that, as well as our freeze on our federal funds.
Was it balanced last year?
It was.
It was, were we balanced last year?
Yes.
This year we're not?
Well, this year, we're gonna depend on our fu- a little bit of a fund balance. Uh, four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Let me ask you, let me ask you, so they were gonna be using the flood dollars and loom of not receiving the federal?
Well, right now, our federal is on, we don't know, we're just frozen. We did have a webinar with Dr. Lance Evans, he did it statewide, and he did say we can plan, what'd he say, hopefully, plan for the worst, but hope for the best. We have been contacted, hoping that we're gonna get that money that unfrozen.
So your six hundred, the six hundred thousand missing out of your twenty-seven million?
Yes, yes.
They're still like there.
We didn't get an increase in our chicken sauce session money, which is a hundred thousand dollars, so that helped toward it.
Is that in that?
And and due to a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars increase in our local contribution, which comes through MDE, which has to do with the how much money is set on twenty-seven bills, and that's statewide. That would be our local contribution that comes in from the authorities, legal authorities.
Are those in that or?
Yes, I budgeted for that, that's in that revenue. And I do put a little bit more in expenses. Now, we've had a couple of staffing changes since this has been set in stone. Um, and I was gonna get to that, but I'll go ahead and tell you now, that we've had some people to retire or resign as of July one, and so instead of rehiring those positions, we have transferred within. So I was not able to adjust that budget accordingly at this time, but it's to a tune of a hundred and ninety-nine thousand two hundred and eleven dollars.
For staff changes.
In our staff changes.
So we're looking at over a million dollar difference right there between revenues and expenditures?
Yes, sir. Now, I've always lowered my revenues on some like your gates for the schools. Um, some of your collection through your tu- not tuition, but the collections through donations. Cause I don't, I mean, donations are a what else? And I did increase some on our expenditures, I always budget a little bit more in expenditures. I much rather budget too high expenditures than have to come back to you every time we need to cha- make that change.
Does this look normal?
Yeah, this is a normal.
You're gonna say more expenditures than you say incoming. So this is not concerning to you this time?
No, because at the end of the year, we always ended a better fund balance, and I'll show you that. Because we did end, most, we were projected to end at three or four million dollars last year, we actually ended in five million. So our fund balance, we have been very good stewards in watching our expenditures and making sure everybody gets two quotes.
Y'all made a big balance at the end of the year.
I did. I did.
Oh, you feel like that?
She's okay.
Yeah, I don't wanna lose any three in our fund and our balance, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Um, and and again, this goes to our state funding, we lost seventy students. So we lost that revenue of four hundred and eight, but I was gonna show you.
Please work. Of course not.
There it goes. So I was gonna show you how our MAEP and MSF funding has done. Back in two thousand and nineteen, we got twelve million dollars, and for this year, we get fifteen. Now, FY twenty-five is the year that they had the change in the funding formula. Now, the base student cost changed as well. Um, but in here, that's, we were able also to use some of our ESER funds. So this has helped us a little bit because in FY twenty-five, we used eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of remaining ESER funds for the first quarter in FY twenty-five. But as you can tell, our student enrollment has declined, which affects our student.
When our student enrollment declines, are we contacting the insurance company saying, hey, we need to lower this? And where we get look?
Each, uh, are talking about workers' comp or just?
Our insurance, no, it was based off how many employees we have, the students we have, and all that.
Yes, we do that every ye- year. I have to do that in, um, like I'll do the workers' comp, I've just submitted the workers' comp. And then the property and liability insurance, I have to fill that every, probably March, when I submit that.
So we are getting adjusted as we?
Of course, you know, we did have a decrease in our premiums this year.
But our, but our numbers are, that was the reason.
I'll just, they don't make that adjustment, what they do is they turn around and do another audit for us mid-year, and we'll have to submit the actual figures. Of course, we talked about this in our budget work section, about the retirement and the group insurance going up. Our, um, group health insurance right now is four hundred and eighty-two per employee per month. Um, and in January, they told us to maybe expect a six percent increase, that is budgeted in there. Now, last year, we budgeted six percent, but it only went up five percent. Um, and our retirement did go up from seventeen point nine percent to eighteen point four. And it's supposed to go up another half percent next year. Um, Education Enhancement Fund, this is great funds for our teachers. Um, I know that we, in fact, y'all had several phone calls about instructional supplies, if there's no, needs to be money for the teachers to spend. Each year, Mississippi Department of Education allocate funds to go on a procurement card. And I've got them in my office right now, we're getting ready to hand out by August the first. They will have seven hundred and forty-eight dollars on that procurement card. Now, it's for your teachers who are licensed through MDE. That is an increase of eight dollars from last year.
Shan White had something on there a while ago about that, he said we need to get them out earlier because the teachers don't have time to get their stuff. That, that was like a big write-up to get early, did you read that?
I did, but I can tell you a little frustration that I have on my end, I had to email some teachers, you've not spent a dime.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand, then we, you know, hey, let's spend this money ASAP because it's supposed to educate instructional purposes for the children that are sitting in front of you.
So is there a date, uh, that the state opens that, opens that up? When, when, whatever says, when is it available to the teachers?
They will not activate the cards till August the first. I mean, I can give them out, but the cards are not activated until then.
Has the state done, MDE done that?
Yes, well, I don't have, yeah, I don't have control over that. And I, when I issue the cards, I'm like, spend it as soon as possible. I tried to set the deadline as Christmas. I would like your funds to be sent by Christmas, spent by Christmas, but a lot of times it's not. And March the thirty-first, I believe that's the cutoff date that they have. Um, I have a budget comparison from last year to this year. We do have a decrease in our revenue of six percent. Again, I've mentioned, because some of it has to do with our ESER funding, we received the remaining part of ESER three funds that we used to. We do, you do not, but I'll be glad, and I could email you all these spreadsheets. Um, and we did receive an increase in our chicken sauce session money. So we also.
No, she said one in there.
It's, it's not in there.
She says she could email it.
And then the revenues, we did decrease them five percent. We had a, we finished the facilities construction at the Bruce High School Auditorium, so that money is gone. And also our ESER, we had to have that spent by December of last year. And this is another bar chart regarding that, you can see that it's just showing, this is FY twenty-five expenditures, FY twenty-six expenditures, as you see, they're just about level. Then I broke it down a little bit further to show your, um, revenue by source. You have your local sources, and that is everything from your, um, Ad Valorm, the schools collect gate money, tuition money, um, from out-of-district students. Now, the pre-K money, we have talked about that, that will come to the district to help support that's forty percent of that teacher salary schedule that's in that pre-K program. The state sources, of course, are MDE, um, other, and federal sources come from all Title One, Two. This does not have Title Two. FY twenty-six, what she was projected, it does not have eighty-five percent of that. So Ms. Nellens, at the beginning of May, they tell you to bank eighty-five percent of your previous year's fully funded amount, that amount is not in there.
Let me ask this question, listen, I'm like, has Reed taught from the legislature about the increase I take forward?
I haven't heard nothing, they always talk about it, but then it never, never comes to pass. Still that same program, the literary, early literature, early literacy, early collaborative, this, this, this.
So where do you contact your representatives?
I've heard very little about it this year at all. Did y'all hear much about it?
We are expected, as you know, y'all, the board approved a timber cutting in Big Creek or Thiny. So we're, signed the contract on that today, so the guy can get in there to start doing that thing. So we are gonna have a little bit of revenue from that, as well as our leases that we received. Then we're talking about the budgeted expenditures by function code. As you can tell, fifty-five point six percent belongs to instruction. Now, this is gonna be anything that directly instructs the student. The support consists, consists of your maintenance, your transportation, your administration, and your counselors. And so I pulled up this afternoon on the MDE website on the superintendent's report, just to let you know that the, that our district, Calhoun County, based on the twenty-three twenty-four superintendent's report, the district admin cost is three point eighteen percent, which is forty-fifth out of a hundred and forty-seven for our district. That's highs to the, uh, lowest of the highs. Um, and then the other expense, non-instructional, that's gonna be your cafeteria workers. And sixteen section, we'll have to maintain, you know, Mississippi Poetry Commission maintains our sixteen section, and the debt service is that three mill. The estimated balance on our, we will continue using our three-mill funds that we have at this time, and that's around three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. We'll use that to do some more facility improvement, um, HVACs, those items like that that are needed, security. Um, I, we're looking at a new intercom system.
Or had some?
Calhoun City Hospital. I believe everybody should have new intercom systems after Calhoun City Schools. Then we're, um, I broke it down a little bit further, and break it down by salaries and benefits, is seventy-five point eighty percent of our budget. Um, purchased professional services or contracts with outside vendors, such as your auditors, your data processing, um, any other educational consultants. And then purchased property services or utilities and maintenance, contract workers, people who are coming in to put in new omnis through at Bartman, uh, things like that. Our utilities have increased, I did budget an increase of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for our utilities. And again, that's probably overestimating, but I would much rather overestimate our utilities. Then we're gonna, um, go to the number of students, teacher units, and non-licensed. As you can tell, remember we talked about in our budget work session, how much our student enrollment has declined. And then here, you have your teacher units, and then in the orange, you have your non-certified or your.
One more in.
Have we ever broken down for a new strategy?
Um, the admin, as far as administrators, it's been the same since two thousand and nineteen, except for adding two administrative positions. We added an assistant principal at Bartman Attendance Center, and then we added one for the alternative school. That's, it's been the same throughout since two thousand and nineteen. We do have, like, like mentioned in the, um, budget work session, we have forty-five teachers with twenty-plus and more years' experience, and we are looking at that, just like this new staffing change that we did. We had some that resigned at the end of the year, and we filled that within. So we are looking at that very.
I'd like to see it trend, all three trend with, with the students.
Decline?
Yeah, I mean, we're, they all, the three need to be trending down, we don't need to have two more than we had, you know, I mean, unless there's a reason why, I just, to have, I mean, I, I like the, the non-licensed teachers and the teachers all are appalling, but we still have two more administrators than we had in nineteen, right? Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not pointing at anybody, I'm just saying, from, from a number standpoint, that's a hundred, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the, for the fringe.
I'm gonna mention though, at Bartman, we had two lead principals, and we put that to one lead principal over the attendance center with two assistants.
Yeah, I'm not pointing at any school at all, I'm just saying, I'd like to see.
But, um, then same thing at Calhoun City, um, we had two lead principals, one at the high school, one at the middle school, and we put them together, it became a lead principal and an assistant principal.
Is there a big, big money difference in that?
Yes, quite a bit, quite a bit of money difference. Same thing at Bruce.
I'm guessing forward.
There is, there's not, there, um, much less, also the same thing at Bruce. When we put Bruce Upper and Bruce High together, it went from having two lead principals to a lead and a, an assistant.
So like thirty, forty grand difference?
What would you guess, Joe, the difference in an assistant and a?
Probably twenty plus benefits, fifteen plus benefits, probably fifteen.
Twenty, twenty five.
You know, and also that te- that lead teacher position, it depends on double A, triple A, here's an experience.
Okay, so is that, is that, that number you gave, does that include the lead teacher, or is that not including?
It does not include the lead. They're classified.
I don't know, I, I like the way the numbers are trending with students, you know, down with students.
And one thing on the non-certified, I'll tell, because back several years ago, your bus drivers, we had several that were just bus drivers, and now we have bus drivers slash teachers. So, and those teachers are in here, so, and they're not gonna be counted in here in your non-certified staff. So we have, we do have a lot of teachers that live in the grounds.
So that may be worth saving, right?
Wait, you will save the insurance on the cost from those?
Right, the insurance and the retirement and stuff, so you're saving the, at least twenty-five percent. Um, cash balance at the, uh, in our district maintenance at the end. Again, we utilize those ESER funds, and we utilize the three-mill note. So at the end of FY twenty-five, we ended the year at four point six million. Um, very proud of how the district utilized and saved and used those three-mill funds like that was projected.
All right, so going into that next year, with, with, how we got laid out around that, do you see that? Do you see that trending up, or do you see it trending down?
I don't really know how to answer that because of our utility cost, um, because of our insurance cost and our retirement cost and our enrollment. And our enrollment, it's, it's sort of hard to say, I mean, it could go either way.
So it'll be a big ledge, that's why I don't want to look at it, but, I don't, I mean, I like seeing it go up, I don't like seeing it go down. You know, I mean, I know, but I'd like to see a flat line and nothing else.
Yeah. I'm just like, oh, that we did.
Yeah, 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 no matter, break down, break down, I just, I just don't wanna eat it up.
I know, I know. And, you know, we have a great team out at the schools and stuff, and we really utilize as much resources that we can. We, um, again, ask them to get two and three quotes before something finally comes over here. We do give the principals discretion of using their maintenance money as they seek to maintain their building, and in big projects, they contact us or Dr. Langford and say, this is what I'm willing to do. Um, and another, the change in our base student cost, you know, it went, used to that Mississippi Student Funding Formula is now based on your average daily attendance, which at MAEP was based on your, um, no, I said that backwards. MAEP was your average daily attendance, where your missing school funding is your enrollment, which that did help us a little bit, but the base student cost went down. Um, and the ending of FY twenty-five, our fund balance, um, still working on a little bit to close the year, but we're looking at to end the fund balance in five million, which, as you know, we're required to have seven percent. Um, and it looks like it's around twenty percent at this time. So the next thing is working on our value of a meal and getting ready to send our stuff to the leveling authority. So this is a comparison, our spreadsheet, or what we have done in the past. We have been averaging around forty-one, forty-two meals, and this was assessed by, so, and I'm gonna show you the worksheet in just a minute. At this time, we're projected to ask for four point eight. It is an increase of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, but I'm gonna show where that's coming from in just a second. Our three-mill is the three-mill note that we got in October of twenty-two, I think that's right. And it's for ten years. We have bought a couple buses from there, and again, we're continuing to do in a lot of your security upgrades.
So the four-four eight is, how many meals?
Of course, we don't know, we don't set the mileage rate, they do. So based on what they determine the value of a meal will be. I don't, I don't know what the, the mileage rate will be.
What, what, what was the max we could ask for?
So the max that we advertised that we could ask for was five point one million? I think that's what it advertised for.
What, what worries me is, is just looking at the, y'all been doing this a lot more times than I have, it might be paranoid, but I, you know, I don't like, I don't like one point three billion dollar deficit, and we're sitting here, and we don't, you know, I don't wanna go on tax duty, I know that. I just, that's worrying a lot.
But, you know, and a part of it too, and I, and you are right with that concern, and then a lot of it is, I do try to estimate the expenditures, because I, what I do is I look at everything that's been done and try to take a three-year average.
It's just, it's made, what was our, what was our surplus from this year?
Yeah, it was five, yeah, eleven thousand, yeah.
What was the difference in what we budgeted and what we did?
Oh, two million, yes, it was over two, two or three million to the good, to the good.
If we go near one point three, we're still in blood, I hate to see it go like that, but, but.
But it, you know, and I hate to say, but this is our best projection, we don't know. You know, we've had people come in and do donations, and they are just out of this world. We have gotten warehouser grants, last year, I forgot how many warehouser grants we got, that's not included in this. You know, and then we turn around and get, we might get more federal funds, we just, you know, don't know. But this is the best projection of what we could get and what we could spend.
So what do you expect them to, when we, or when, when there's something wrong with it, as far as?
My plan has not even been released, I've not even done a plan for this school year. They've been saying next week since February.
They said next week's expanding, forget it.
Yeah, I'll keep pushing.
So I do know that MDE, was it MDE, sent out for a survey, and everybody in this office filled out a survey saying how detrimental it would be if they froze, kept those funds frozen, and so. We're, what's in our opinion, you do strongly.
Services that were required by that.
So here is the Ad Valorm Request Worksheet. So this is what will be presented through the, um, board supervisors. And I'll tell you how these amounts arrive. This amount is four million dollars is what we have actually received from the leveling. from the leveling authority for Ad Valorm. That's true dollar to dollar as of the end of July. I have to estimate what I'm gonna, what the district will collect for the next two months, because you know, they're year-end September the third. So, this is a projection. This is actual dollars that we have received regarding homestead. So, our base amount is four point six million dollars. The district at this time could ask for anything from one to four percent. And then that's the district's decision, that's the board's decision. The new programs is an amount that we receive from Mississippi Department of Education. That is for local, or new programs or local contribution. And the easiest way I can sum up local contribution is the portion of school funding that comes from the local, local sources is calculated at twenty-seven percent of the base student cost or twenty-seven meals of the local tax effort, whichever one is less. Um, and the purpose of, purpose of it is to ensure all districts contribute locally to their own education funding. Every district either gets an increase or a decrease in their local.
What would follow a new program?
Um, new curriculum, new safety, um, some of, that's some of the items that they told me that we could do for the local contribution amount. We can ask for this amount or up to that amount, but it's a one-time-year thing. Next year, you can't ask for it. It's one or done.
So, you can take it or you are not able to take it. And then this number is increased this year quite a bit. That's a higher number than we're used to seeing in that spot.
So, this is the increase of the amount that would be requested if this would, if this did not change.
Based on previous meal rate?
Well, the previous meal rate, ninety, ninety-eight, six, that's forty-eight, that's forty-eight point one meal on the, on the old, old rate. That, that's the four point eight, that, forty-eight point one meals. What, the way I, the way I had to go, maybe I'm wrong mathly.
So, Joe, the base amount though is the same as it was last year, correct?
Yes.
And then this extra that we're seeing is from that local, which is also higher than normal. It's usually in the sixty thousand, somewhere sixty, sixty and so.
But the local contribution becomes from MDE. They send out a spreadsheet each year saying this and how much is. And it's got to do with the amount that twenty, and it comes from the leveling authorities. They have to report some information to MDE to let them know the assessed value and so forth, and how much twenty-seven meals range.
So, we're not asking for any more money than we did last?
This amount, except for that.
Except for that.
That's, that's by any.
That's right. And the percentage amount, we could ask up to four percent. You just have to vote to do that. We're not asking for anything. We believe we can make it without it, and that's what we always try to do.
And this budget does, you know, the revenues that I presented does not have an increase or anything in there at this time. And I mean, you could ask for a certain amount up to that or just leave it, but that's the only difference in what we requested last year.
So, Joe, if we ask for less than the one thirty-four, what would that mean for us next year? If we ask for less than, or you can't ask for less.
I mean, it's one or done. You ask for one thirty-four or nothing.
If you don't take it, you can't get it next year.
No, no, it's one. Next year could be two hundred thousand, or next year could be thirty thousand, or if it's a decrease in our local contribution, we ask for zero.
We don't have, we don't have any. So.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, two point six.
Right.
We don't have to. We can make it, stay, stay where we need to be.
So, as we remember this, uh, goal five of our strategic plan is to remain financially responsible and with all funds and resources. And as we close tonight's budget hearing, I want to emphasize our district's ongoing commitment to being good stewards of every dollar we receive. Our strategic goal remains clear, to remain financially responsible with all of our funds and resources, ensuring they are used in ways that directly support student learning and staff success. We appreciate the trust our community places in us, and we'll continue to make thoughtful and transparent decisions that reflect our school, our shared priorities. Thank you for your continued support as we work together for the success of all of our students. Any questions or?
Well, you know, I'll be advertising this, but, you, you talked about it once, and we've talked about turning into a tennis center and stuff. You know, is, is, is there an appetite to turn a Calhoun City into a content center? I know Bruce has got problems with the white building. It's gonna be hard to do.
We would not be able to house Calhoun City in our current facility at the high school. It's just not big enough. Um, there has been some conversation about, um, doing some classrooms. You've been in school before, when you go inside to get to the gym.
Right.
But to kind of make that sort of model where you would add some classrooms, and you would enter into the school, then go into the gym. Y'all know, y'all been there, you know what it looks like. Uh, but we would have to have some classrooms. We, actually, when we thought about this a few years ago, Mr. Patton and I went out there and just measured to see what kind of modulars could be good out there. The only spot, you know, it's a eye, people landed a lot of heels. Uh, what we own is on, on the edge, on the south side, but there would be room for a couple of modulars in that, uh, parking lot beside the cafeteria, gym, cafeteria out in there, but we could only think we could fit two, which would not be enough. Uh. Bruce, it's debatable whether you could put them all on the campus that we have without the white building.
I, I, I'll vote problem because of like.
We hadn't dove real deep in that, I mean.
Can we do a study this year on both and see what we need?
There is one that has started. Um, he's started to look at it, and if you, uh, zonner, zonner, zonner. Um, if you just look at the classroom needs, we have plenty, but that doesn't take into account any special education classrooms, classrooms for your speech pathologies, places for nurses, people who come in and test are gonna need locations. You just don't wanna be on top of each other because you didn't do your homework.
Yeah, yeah, we want to start a kid, ain't nothing but that. I just, I'd love to see what, what it costs to do one or both and whatever, you know. Yeah, I mean, we can sell the campuses. Can we sell the ca, is that an option? Can we sell the campuses?
We can sell the buildings. Can't sell the buildings. You have the potential to shut two, uh, elementary buildings, and then, of course, you would then combine your, your administrative staffs, and you would only be dealing with one administrative office instead of multiple. Well, we're not gonna say about that. But cafeteria, you certainly would not have to run to.
Yeah. I think the cost, just the, just the overall cost of the building alone would be huge, just getting them off.
How many classrooms do we have in the red building connected to the cafeteria at Bruce?
The small, the small, I don't know what you're talking about. I mean, there's, you know, it's just that one long hallway, uh.
You're familiar with the building?
What, which building are you going with?
The, uh.
Oh, Bruce, right. I thought you were talking about Calhoun City government.
No, Bruce, it is, does have a label.
It's got like, what, twenty? I think there's fifty-one classrooms total on Bruce campus. I don't know, I was sticking in my head.
I mean, you're, you're last.
There, there are, um, some more spaces down there. Now, they've got, um, some extension rooms, this and that. They're using them, but as far as the classroom space, there are some, some.
There's plenty of room to build on right there too. You got a lot of space.
Plenty of space though, and the white building.
Yeah.
Which buildings? Compared. The elementary to what we have there, the ale, the ale, or the cafeteria, comparing the, you know, keep of those. Of course, of course, that would lie.
At Bruce?
At Bruce, yes.
Tell me exactly.
Which, which, which one is in better shape?
They're both pretty darn good, Jack, to be honest with you. They're gonna be probably as good as, as any, uh, elementary school is well maintained and that, that upper elementary building is well maintained as well, but also. They all have new tiled bathrooms and.
I just know they're a lot pregnant over.
They do, they, um, kept it painted and, and cleaned and.
Just don't look at them.
Especially when you look at the green roof this year.
So, you said, who would, who would do the study?
The only people we've ever run across that were willing to try to do the study were architects. Um, and we asked multiple times to, but you know, he's more about, uh, the facility and being able to house people, the children in the facility. We've looked for some years to try to find somebody that could talk about saving teacher units if you put everybody on one campus and share and, uh, that's another.
Can we not use it in my house, like get Dr. Good, Kyle, them, just kind of get together and say, what's?
We've done some rough studies on that. Um. One of the main things about putting stuff together, period, is you don't need to have but one, and just speaking generally, you don't need to have, try to have but one athletic facility. You don't need to have, uh, junior high and the high school athletic facilities that really would be, would be profitable. Speaking of, have a shared one gym, one football field, one basketball field, you don't have to say you are. Those were the things that we found during the years that helped really save money. Because they're so high, and they're older too, so.
Were there any written questions for me, or? Any other questions from both?
At Monday night's board meeting, we'll present the budget, and y'all will just approve the budget as it was presented tonight, unless there's some changes that need to be made, but, you know, just, and I'll do the Ad Valorm based on what was presented tonight, if that's.
Did, did, uh, the CDC thing take into that to figure out?
Wouldn't you ask me for my, I'm so sorry. I've got so much in my head.
No, no, you're good, you're good. That, somebody like.
I know we're talking about the campus.
They're having to go to Bruce High School and get everything. There's kids falling all over the county just trying to go to school there.
Yes.
They.
We're all.
Okay. Uh, they just, all, there's kids from all over the county coming to the CDC, but they're going to go to Bruce High School and try to get funds, do whatever they can do, and they kind of, I, I'll have to fix that.
We'll, we'll try and work on just a, a, a split budget, so to speak. Uh, we kind of have that situation at every school though. Calhoun City Elementary houses all of the three and four-year-olds in the district. And then Bardeman has a self-contained classroom that serves all of the elementary students in the district. And then Bruce has the CDC, which of course is for the children that are the most impacted. So, we do have that situation where there are children from all schools at each.
Well, they, they don't want great amount of money. They just need a little spending, a little petty cash to buy this or that.
What he asked me about was the difference in like instruction versus the building that would be responsible. So, yes.
Can we get that done again?
I guess. We're gonna, we're gonna do a needs assessment is what we're talking about. I'll ask Miss King to do a needs assessment of what they might need out there, and just to go from there. Take a little special look at it.
All right, we know the commission, the board, and the two. If there been a motion to adjourn.